Everybody called the regular meeting of the Clay Lake Planning Commission and Parks and Recreation Committee to order for this July 5th, 2016. Julie, if you could do the roll call, please.
Commissioner Kramer?
Here.
Commissioner Edgensen?
Here.
Commissioner Webb?
Present.
Vice Chair Slougham?
Present.
Chairperson Yang. President. If you'll all join me and tell me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Our legislative agents to the flag of the United States of America. I am to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending this meeting. Um, let's see. The first, uh, did we have, Julie, did we have any public comments?
Uh, no, we're not.
Thank you very much. Um, and I'm sure we'll go straight to the public hearings. Um, the first item is a public hearing to consider approval of use permit 01-16 to expand a small family daycare to a larger family daycare center.
That's Mr. Sherman.
And, um, oh, yes, Commissioner Kramer.
This one? Yeah. It's fine. Uh, I, at this time, I must recuse myself. I am a neighbor of the applicant living across the street. So I guess I will leave the room until I can call back in.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Okay. And, um, we have a staff report for the use permit.
Yes, the planning commissioners, as stated in the staff report, the community development department is receiving a use permit application from Sharon McCracken of Runse Grasbles, who is currently operating the small family daycare center at this site. There are no concerns of addition or any further renovations or improvements. She has installed a, recently installed a five-foot fence around the play area. Maximum number of children cared for in a small family daycare, including children under the age of 10, is eight. The maximum number of children cared for in a large family daycare is 14 with an assistive present. At least two of the children are at least six years of age, no more than three infants are cared for during any time when more than 12 children are present. The licensee must notify parents that the facility is caring for two additional school like children and there may be up to 13, 14 children in the home at one time. These types of facilities are regulated solely by the state California Health and Safety Code, upon compliance with the city's standards and requirements. The city has limited authority to regulate, excuse me, family daycare centers with the exception to traffic, parking, and noise. I would like to add that the public notice, uh, public hearing notice stated that we are going to request approval of a notice of categorable exemption. However, existing indoor daycare centers are exempt from CQ per section 15300, so we will not be asking for the approval in the resolution. The applicant is here tonight, in case you have any questions, and we'll battle through them over the planning commissioners.
Thank you, Julie. All right. Um, okay. We have the applicant here, and so did the applicant, we discuss this portion, the applicant?
I'm here.
However, um, let's hear from the applicant, Commissioner. Okay. All right. If the applicant can come up, if you have anything to add to the staff report.
Um, I'm just, I kind of fell off on everything. I do want to have a fire marshal come, but...
Can you kind of speak into the mic?
I'm not going to do that.
You could just state your name, please.
My name's Sharon McCracken. I'm not going to do anything further until I know if I can open it up or not. The state hasn't put the additional requirements on me other than just approval from the city and, um, not even the fence. I just did that myself because I do have, um, I don't know if that's a creek in front of my house where the bridge goes. It's dry most of the time. Um, that's really it. I don't have any questions. Um, I just, I just did what they told me to do.
You'd mentioned something about the fire marshal.
I do have to have a fire marshal come on site. Once it's approved by the city, then I would have a fire marshal come in and just make sure that it's up to code as far as, I think I overkilled on the small one, so I think it's already to code, but I'm going to have to have him come in anyway just to make sure. But I opted to go, um, with the larger extinguisher and I have to install a bell. So some kind of a, of ring meeting. I'm not really sure if we're really clear on what that would be, just to alert the kids. I already do fire drills, so I'm not quite sure. Though I'm sure they'll tell me if they, all the rest is going to say. Which is funny. But I'm more for overkill, so I probably have already met my priorities.
Thank you very much, Ms. McCracken. And, um, if we have any further questions too, we will definitely break you back up. I appreciate you being thorough. All right. Um, commissioners, did you have any questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Webb?
One of the recommendations that the building inspector had, uh, Mr. Sherman? Speaker? Better not. Okay. One of the recommendations that the building inspector had was to fix the approach to the street, or there at the bridge.
On the other side, it's, it's, um, not at the approach, but at the descent, there's a pothole that has started to...
Can you come back to that?
We'll just pull you up a chair.
So on the other side of the bridge, as you come up and down, a small pothole has occurred, and we actually had somebody come out and look at it, and they said that, um, the rebar is fine, they just have to clean it out and epoxy it, and then, poor concrete didn't, he didn't think it would take very long, but it's going to, um, require that nobody is on the bridge. Um, I don't want to pose that to be a problem. I've talked to all my daycare parents. I have so much parking on the other side of the bridge that walking over the bridge isn't going to be a big hassle for them for the 24 hours that they'll have to do that. So that's something that I'd say.
Have you made arrangements for, for somebody to come in and do the work, then?
I have. I have. My fear is it's going to...
And when do you expect that to be?
I, it was supposed to actually happen last weekend, but because it was the 4th of July, he didn't really think that through and kind of gave me a call and was like...
Did you mention that?
Ah, I think it did. So hopefully next weekend.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that. Um, any other commissioners with any comments or questions?
Other than to, other than to commend her for, you know, to take care...
I'm very excited. It's been, it's been turned around here that, that, I have 14 people that are on a waiting list that want, and that I've given up to turn away a lot. It's really, I needed, it's big. I didn't think it was going to be that big.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I drove, I personally drove past this, well, I drove past this site twice, and then I found it, and it's, it's hidden there. It's, that's what I liked, that it's like out, yeah. And I noticed that the engineer had mentioned about the ingress and egress for emergency vehicles, but as you mentioned, and I know that fire had commented too, that that's something that I'll look at and see in terms of, you know, the emergency access.
And it does have a, a round head bell, and then we cleared, you had said we should clear, so we cleared out the whole area, and you can actually park like a sundial now. So there, I'm going to keep the driveway clear of parent parking, now that if anything did happen, it would just be a clean turnaround that, in the driveway. Kind of tried to address it before I thought.
Exactly. And part of the permit process for this use permit is getting the clearance for the certificate of occupancy, and of course, weight load and things like that, that's where the portion will come into play. So, um, that was something that I was, um, looking at, so. Thank you. All right. Um, okay, I'll, uh, open it to, oh, sorry.
I have a question. Is, is that property in a flood zone?
Oh, that's a good question. Um, we didn't...
And there's, it, it's always that problem, but I think, for the state...
I think we got flood insurance. I don't know if it was required. Gosh, that's a really good question. I don't think it would be a problem. We did go through that, that, the big rain, and the creek did come up, but, um, because of the way it flows, nothing came through our yard, none of our yards swelled up, we didn't have, um, any kind of collected water or anything like that there, so is that kind of answer?
I guess, I, I don't know, the regulations for, from the state, that being in a flood zone is not a problem, correct?
It wasn't to open up, no.
Okay.
And they did ask him those questions, and they did look at my, um, my plan, so.
All right. Julia, do you happen to know that?
Yeah, you're in an AO and a 2% flood zone, so that's, the house, I believe, is in a 2%, which is with causing insurance company to...
Check it out.
Yeah, I was saying what, yeah, your name on, on whether or not it's mandatory.
This is an existing structure, and there aren't any proposed additional?
No. I'm not going to go any bigger than, I don't even want 14 kids, per se. I want the availability to offer parents, like, what happens a lot is a parent will come late, and then another parent might come early, and I have a timeframe, I have a lot of the people that work at Meadowwood and the hospital have hours from 6:00 to 2:30, and then the next shift is 2:30 to 6:00. And so there's this really small window to be able to offer both shifts, and that's the only problem I've ever had with, um, the state, is that, you know, there's a gray area in there, and I have to be really careful. So I really have to make some parents wait in the car until other parents show up, and that's kind of a problem.
And what are your operating hours?
24 hours is what I'm open, but that's not what I'm doing. I'm doing 6:30 to 7:00, and I have two kids on the weekend, and I think I'm going to phase that out. It's just, um, I really thought that I was going to have to offer this great, you know, it was really hard to find any kind of other job here, and so I wanted to offer whatever I could to start out, and then I'm not having that problem. So I'm going to keep it 6:00 to 7:00 is probably, probably...
Yes. Thank you, Ms. McCracken. Any further questions or comments from commissioners? Okay, um, I'll go ahead and open it to public comment if anyone, oh, go ahead.
Do I, for the...
Um, yeah, you can go ahead and sit down if anyone wants to come up and, um, speak about this project, this potential project. Anyone?
My main concern is, I'm a neighbor, I...
I'm sorry, ma'am, if you could just state your names, sorry, your name.
My name is Darlene Stratford. I'm a neighbor. Um, I actually back it, um, my back fence backs it. Um, my concern is it's a small road, and if there's anybody parking, as you said, waiting for children or dropping off or picking up, and they're parking on the roadway, that's my concern. Um, it's a very small road that's not even kept now, let alone having more traffic and then traffic building up. So that would be my concern at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Stratford.
Uh, Laura Cooper in, not as close to Darlene, but still, uh, just because I've had to fight in front of the city council for an ordinance, or an ordinance, I want to make sure the ordinance still stands, and I want to make, I also want to state that I, as a neighbor, I am really a children's advocate, so I'm really happy to see that you're doing this. I want to make sure, is it still stand, that if you have a licensed daycare center, that you can't have marijuana growths, like?
I believe it's 600 feet. Yeah, 600 feet.
Now, I don't know if there are marijuana grows, but I assure you, that would be checked out, and there would be some enforcement if there are, if there is.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Anyone else? Seeing that that's it, I'll go ahead and close this, uh, public comment and bring it back to the commission. Whoops. Well, it sounds like there's any complaints?
Okay, although that we approve resolution number TC 216-3, uh, resourcing by the commission for the city of Clay Lake approving the use permit for a larger family daycare center as requested by Sharon McCracken on, uh, say, with the address and everything. 15420, Row 0, Clay Lake.
I would second that if you include the compare of the rich approach.
And, and as recommended for the conditions of approval as listed on the resolution.
Okay. I wanted to add, also, if we could add an APN and an address to the resolution, too. Yeah. And site-specific, so adding that and, uh, here. Try it again?
So, and then?
Okay. Thank you.
So, and then?
Is that it? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay. The resolution passes, and, okay.
If we do need a resolution?
Do you mean a vocal vote?
Oh, vocal vote. Would you like a vocal vote? No? Okay.
If that's not going to be...
Somebody, can somebody bring, uh, the rest?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Do you want to laugh?
No, he locked us in. Help us open the door.
Hey, you understand now that you can proceed with your plans?
Thank you.
Do I need to bring pictures of the, uh, variation these days?
Yeah, we'll be in contact with you. I'll call you tomorrow, um, once the resolution has, has been, um, the additions have been added and signed, I'll give you a call, and then we'll sit down and talk on the next day.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, let the record show that Commissioner Russ Kramer has, um, come, returned to the commission meeting, um, and our next public hearing item is a public hearing to consider amendments to Clay Lake Municipal Code Sections 2-2 Elections and 18-5 Signs pertaining to signage. Julie, do you have, can maybe have the staff report, please?
Actually, our city attorney is going to be...
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Crystal Hodgson. I go back with the affiliate for Ryan tonight, because I assisted Julie in the proposed ordinance amendments. I'll give you a little bit of background as to the need for the changes. There was a case last year called Reed versus Town of Gilbert, decided by the U.S. Supreme Court, but we discussed it briefly in the staff report. Before that case, most federal courts ruled that cities could have a limited number of content-based regulations where they, they regulated signs based on what the signs contained, and that, that was a little bit of an undecided legal issue. And when, what Reed decided, what the court decided in Reed was that, if a, if you have to look at a sign and read its content in order to decide how to regulate it, it's content-based, and would be presumed unconstitutional unless it can meet the really high standard of strict scrutiny, which it's very difficult to meet that. And so practically, um, we had, uh, for the legal review of the sign code that, that I helped Julie with was to go through your sign code and the elections code where it regulates signs, to see if there were provisions that were content-based and would likely be held unconstitutional after the Reed case. And I have more details about the Reed, Reed case if you'd like it, but I think I'll just highlight the, the main, the big change we made to the code was, as you can see, the elections, Section 2-2 had, uh, regulations that were only pertain to political signs, and there was a number of hoops you had to jump through before you could, could post those. And it was content-based, uh, which is no longer permissible after the Reed case, so we are suggesting that you recommend removing the, the provisions of the elections code pertaining to political signage, and instead we added provisions to Section 18-5 where your, your signage provisions are, to allow for temporary signs in, were, and that would allow non-commercial signage in all districts. Uh, we didn't, we didn't spell out what, what can be included on the signs because that would be content-based, but those provisions would allow for political or ideological signs. And there's also, we, with that, we added a provision that would allow for temporary signs with any message in residential areas when the property is holding a one-time event, and we did that to allow for, for commercial signs such as garage sale and other non-commercial, uh, non-commercial messages to be placed, such as a, a neighborhood party or other type of event. And so there's an opportunity for property owners to display signage related to commercial or non-commercial, uh, messages for a temporary period of time. There were a few other changes we made with agriculture and construction signs where your code called out the content of a sign, and we reworked that so that it allows for signage on those properties, but it doesn't dictate the content. I think those will still allow signs for, to, to serve those purposes, but it's legal now. And then there were some other cleanup issues we dealt with at the same time that weren't necessarily content-related, but such as how you measure the signage and then what you do with, uh, with signs that have multiple faces. We, uh, cleaned those up a little bit so they were easier to understand and apply. So I'd be happy to answer questions for you or give you more legal background on the Reed case. I'll stand by.
And just to kind of add to that, um, when we do go through the zoning code update, then we'll be going through the whole sign ordinance in detail. Just to kind of clean it up.
Thank you very much for that. Um, Commissioner Webb?
When would this become effective, and how would it affect, uh, affect the existing signs many who wish to not conform?
If the sign is, is, is approved and it's a permanent sign, it would be grandfathered in, so as long as it is still in good condition, it would be allowed for a certain period of time. The ordinance, so if you recommend approval of the, the ordinance, the city council would need a first and second reading, and then it would be effective 30 days after the, the adoption, so, you know, probably within about two months after it goes through the process.
Yeah, definitely. How do we go about, we'd have to go out and have somebody inventory the existing signs to see what is existing, if it's going to be grandfathered in, so there's some record of it.
Well, you can, you don't have a legal responsibility to do that. You could respond, um, on a case-by-case basis. I think because the temporary signs were the biggest change, um, I think you're going to find that there are not, these changes are, are not going to have an immediate impact at a large scale. So because of the temporary signs for political, we've actually just, I think, not been enforcing that elections code provision this election cycle, but temporary signs, you know, are, um, temporary nature, so it's probably not going to be as big a problem. If there's some specific case in mind, you could let me know, I'll help work through that.
Well, my concern is that we have a lot of signs that have not been, the existing ordinance has not been, uh, applied to them. Should have been, but never was. Uh, and now we're talking about doing another ordinance that maybe grandfathers end those that were, never had a permit to start with.
You know, if you allow, if you don't enforce your code against a sign that's illegal, that doesn't create rights in most cases. A grandfathered sign would be one that was permitted under your ordinance and then is made illegal by a change to your ordinance, so if there's a sign that you've seen in town or more than one that, or you think violates your sign code, in most cases, you can still have this taken down, and I, I don't, Julie can probably speak to it more because she understands the, all the signs in your, and I'm not seeing there's probably a big impact with the changes we've made here to take out the content-based regulations that are going to, I'm not sure it's going to be as big a problem with that, but...
I just want to make sure that we can stay as fair as we possibly can, and, and this is a tough area to do business in, so I don't want to see it get so strict with our sign ordinance that somebody can't advertise their business, which is the other side of the coin, which can happen.
Sure. I'm not sure this will have an impact on, on commercial signage. Certainly, um, permanent commercial signage, I don't think we had to make any changes to that, so I don't think you have businesses that would have had a sign that is now, uh, illegal.
Yeah, those types of changes, the things that I mentioned, that we'll be looking at when we revise the zoning code, may have changed sign, size of things that are being on.
Well, I've noticed more and more there's illuminated signs that are being used, and I'm pretty sure based on the size and kind of sign that they didn't get permitted. Sign, of course, that must have stirred up...
Well, I mean, if you don't have a permit, it's, you know, illegal regardless, so.
You wouldn't be talking about the one in Calvary Chapel.
I'm not talking about any sign in particular. I'm about, I'm signing on the channel.
Oh, okay. Because when I come around the corner and it was like, it looked at me, and I was just like, I don't remember that thing being there. Um, so you, you, I'm sorry, Natalie, can I?
That's okay, Commissioner.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, you keep talking about political signs, and, and those need to be taken down within a certain amount of time after the election is concluded, okay? I assume that that is still the way that it goes. 30 days after the election, you know, you have the time to put "thank you very much", and then take your sign down, or two weeks or whatever it is. My concern is the yard sale sign that says "yard sale today", but no date, but you got an address, and it's there for a month. I don't know if they need a permit to put that thing up, but I don't, you know, just take the darn thing down when it's done. Is there a way to do follow-up on those?
I think that's covered under temporary signs. Hard part is enforcing it.
Enforcing it.
Follow-up, yeah.
Yeah, what we're proposing is, um, it's 18-5, 407B, one, temporary signage allowed to be displayed during a one-time event. This is where the yard sale signs would fall into. See, A is one additional sign. Note, B is not exceed three square feet maximum. And then D, may be displayed up to two days before the one-time event, must be removed within 24 hours after the event ends. And the city may summarily remove a sign displayed violation of the subsection, so if you had, if you have evidence that the yard sale has taken place on a Saturday, and you go by Monday or Tuesday and install it, your code enforcement officer could take the sign down.
And, yep, so they can name for those.
And there are other, you know, if you, if you think it's a good idea to implement a permit system or have a way to track it, there are a number of ways we can amend that. Um, I think, I think Julie and I are going to talk through that, and it's just, you have to have the staff to, you know, enforce that, so it's a resource call based on what you recommend, but I'd be glad to help, you know, maybe we can do it with the sign, overall sign, overhaul, or you can give me direction now.
So many of the yard sale signs are put up illegally to start with, they're on telephone poles, or stop signs, or other places like that, so they're already illegally where it starts, and we just need to reinforce it.
Exactly. Commissioner Kramer?
Uh, yes, my question is more of clarification, I guess, um, and I can't find, or I thought I read earlier where, uh, something about LED signs, but looking at prohibited signs, signs that physically are, usually moves for over rotated, created, illusion of movement, an LED sign, I suppose, could do that, so what, what was the idea, is there, is there an idea to prohibit LED signs, or?
That wasn't a provision that I recommended changing, so it's been, it's been in the code already, and it just, it didn't have any, I didn't see a legal problem with it, but, so I'm not sure what it was intended to cover.
Well, I, I can't think of one here clearly, but the one that comes to mind is one at Lord Lake High School, where it's an LED sign, you could change it, and they do change it, sometimes they rotate the messaging. Is that prohibited under this?
It looks like it, to me, I would say, depends on the specific signs, but it looks like it may fit in that provision of 18-5.404A.
Yeah, or 4A, it's a little...
Are you talking about what kind of signs, a bright aid, or flash at the temperature, or prices?
Uh, that could be included in that, yes.
That type of sign was... That type of sign was included in the use permit for the building.
And they can also do animal alerts on that sign too?
Yes.
That was the one, so we'll be on that one.
Exactly.
The fire department is looking at what came to mind, my old gun. The fire department's looking at changing their sign, which now is a firefighter has to get up, climb up on a single caselot, change out the sign, and go do an LED style, which can be programmed from inside and changed, which is much safer, which is much cheaper to operate. And it, of course, will be a public service back then. Anyway, that was a good question. I would not like to see, I personally would not like to see an LED signs element and prohibited. All right, is that my spot? Section 18-5.404H. Here's where I saw it. It might be covered somewhere else as well.
But would you rather have something like that covered with the conditional use permit?
I think so. I don't know. It's here as prohibity.
Right. It's a prohibited, allowed with a use permit.
It doesn't say that.
I know, I'm just, I'm suggesting it's something you'd like to change.
Yeah, I'd like to see something changed that allowed with the use permit. That'd be fun.
Now, there's another way of looking at this too. I hate to see this go with absolutely no illuminated signs. It's stuck to the business in this town, and business people need to have all they hope they can get just in order to stay in business. And signage is part of that. And I think if we try to eliminate everything or try to turn this into a community of no signs, we're making a wrong mistake with our business decision.
We do address in the development standards in 18-5.409, under development standards, it says, "The lighting for externally illuminated signs shall be so arranged that the light source is not directly visible from a public right-of-way or adjacent property." So that kind of gives a little way on how much of lighting would be seen. It doesn't exactly say LED, but has that illuminated sign in it. But.
But 504 is specific.
It's specific. It says, you know.
It's prohibited.
It's prohibited. So it's how you, you read it. You haven't just added A number eight, right?
408?
408, yeah. 404.
How about if you had 404H as a conditional use permit, instead of just totally illuminating it?
I'm in favor of that. 404.
404H, that's the one I looked at. What makes the moving signs on the.
I think you need to have, the prohibited signs up above is what.
Yeah, but it just, is a section on moving signs now. Do you remember all of them?
No, not necessarily, but I'm zeroing in on the LEDs.
And just so we're clear, this section here, there weren't any changes to the existing code. So she didn't make changes to that, but it's just how it already is.
Just for the LED signs to change and success, provision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And as Greg said, you couldn't require, prohibit this unless a conditional use permit is obtained, and that may give you, you know, you think about traffic safety and whether or not you want every sign in town to be flashing. Maybe either option is legal, is whatever comes into consideration.
And it would give the commission quite a bit of control over how bright the sign could be, how times, I mean, when, times and then it flashes, or.
I think that we need to have both G and H be part of the condition. Why not just. Flashing and rotating. Why not just move them out of 404 into 408?
Is that a solid? I agree with that.
So right now we have G and we're adding H, or is H existing? That's what I'm.
G and H are both existing and prohibited under the existing code. So the suggestion is to relocate them to section 408 where they'd be allowed with the conditional use.
Yeah, and I.
Yeah, we don't want it.
Yeah, exactly.
Completely. Then to provide this, we can have a flashing sign. We will, I'm ready to see.
And Commissioner Webb made a good point that when this was written, of course, they didn't have LED lights and that's everything, and now we have technology and that type of lighting. So yeah, it's something like some regulation. I agree. I'm going to bring that too. Yeah, add that language.
So we move it from 40, then you're prohibited to 408. Do we need a?
Yeah.
Do we have to prove this?
Commissioner, our question, our attorney, 404G prohibits flashing and rotating signs. And now we're talking about moving H into conditional use permit. Is there going to be a conflict there? Because there's, could be flashing or rotating signs in.
I'm right about the move above, above two.
G and H. Am I asking you what? Okay, I don't know if we had public comment on that, did we?
Oh, that's right, we're, are we getting discussing?
Yeah.
Then I'll open it up to public comment. John?
Please leave.
Oh, quiet, here we go, here's Robo.
You can state your name.
Hi, I'm John Jensen. I was really interested in the discussion of the LEDs because it's a technology that I've been using more and more myself. And I think that you may want to do a little bit of research on luminosity, because no E's can vary very widely in terms of voltage and luminosity, so it can actually be quite blinding. So if there's no, if there's no limis.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you very much.
And I guess just to add to that, again, when we go through and do our zoning code, we're going to have a comprehensive.
Yeah.
And that falls under conditional uses? And we put the LED under conditional uses?
That would, that would still be.
And that it would be where we would be able to say.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Look at things like what you brought up.
Let's do laser lights. Stop me sitting.
But when they approved the sign at Rite Aid, we had a considerable amount of public argument against the sign that people wait in the apartment, houses over there and those things, which I don't think that's happened, but that was part of the argument at the time. So we have to be careful with signs.
That's true. I remember that, and we moved it away from the apartment building, yeah. So that's a very good point.
They still have maybe animal alerts?
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Okay, do we have a?
Close the public.
Oh, yeah, I will close the public comment. Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John. All right. Okay.
I moved it. We approve ordinance number 190-2016, an ordinance stood up by the city council of the city of Clear Lake Committee in section 222 of the Clear Lake Municipal Code entitled Election, and in section 18-5, Clear Lake Municipal Code entitled Signs with the recommendations of this committee, and we go to section 1804, eliminating G and H and moving to 408. Second.
Just to clarify, this is recommending approval of the ordinance.
Yes.
First and the second. All in favor? Should we do a roll call? Julie?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Webb?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Slocum?
Aye.
Chairperson Antis?
Aye.
All right. That's me. Passes. And the third item we have, public hearing, the public hearing to consider development agreement, DA 2016-01, for a proposed development of property located at 15895 Dam Road Extension, APN 010-043-34. And we have a.
Just a verbal statement. So this is a property that's the former Fresh &amp; Easy property that's located just north of the Carlos Jr. As you may or may not know, Fresh &amp; Easy went into bankruptcy as a corporation. They, through the bankruptcy process, their properties throughout the country have been separated out and sold. There's a developer that purchased a number of properties and included this property, and I've been in discussions with this developer for a while, talking about having a development agreement towards a particular site. We currently do not have what are called development proven impact fees, which would be to go towards improving streets or other types of capital facilities. As we go through and get the general plan in place, then we will be putting in development impact fees, but we currently don't have any. So in lieu of that, I've been negotiating with the developer to provide a payment to the city that would help us to pay for some street improvements, specifically the Dam Road Extension that's going to be going up from the end of Dam Road to the north up into 18th Avenue. So the developer would participate by paying the speed through the development agreement. At the last minute, we had, I won't call it a disagreement, but a.
A hitch and a get-along.
So that we're, we're negotiating a certain point that we're hoping to have the final agreement back at the next planning commission meeting. So we had already noticed this particular planning commission meeting in the newspaper for the public hearing, so we have to go through a bit, but then after, we'll just continue it to the next meeting.
I was kind of wondering why I didn't have the, okay. Totally. There was a bell now.
So we're not ready to talk about it?
We're not ready to go into all the details of it yet, no.
How far in the question is he going with the development of that project?
They didn't do any development whatsoever. They had a.
Did he approve?
Yep, we have, what was it? What was the document, Julie?
What's that?
The document that we just found the other day.
The regulatory agreement or?
Yeah, we had a vesting map.
The vesting tentative?
I believe that's what it is.
How's it dated?
2010?
Yes. That's still, well, still good. Usually it's two years, unless they filed some extensions.
Yeah, the state was giving out extensions for subdivisions there for a while, but those were over with by 2014 now.
So they were tentative, vesting tentative, right? Or unless there wasn't a development agreement signed, definitely.
There wasn't a development agreement, but there were some conditions in that that we want to also have them in the development agreement that we didn't have previous to finding that document.
And was this the property that had the driveway put in the wrong spot? Or was that the Carlos Jr.?
It's the same area.
It's the same area, yeah. Mr. Wonderful, yes.
Between the Sears store and the Carlos Jr.?
Yeah.
That would be it. So there's not a tentative map?
So they've got to go through the whole process.
Yeah, they start from scratch. I guess we'll see that.
So we can come to an agreement, but.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. So having open.
Yeah, you need to open the public hearing.
Exactly.
See if John has anything to say.
Is that opening the public hearing? John?
He's looking up, you're playing Battleship, is that what you do?
Angry Birds.
Oh, okay.
Next time we'll try to arrange this, you don't have to stand in line, she'll want to.
Yeah. I remember the Fresh &amp; Easy proposal because they have this deli, and I remember the late nights, I was looking forward to going there, but it.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't close this, you would just continue?
I would just, exactly. So continuing, so I will continue this public hearing to the July 19th planning commission meeting. Okay. And do we have a city manager report?
Yeah, just real briefly, I want to thank you all for participating in the training last week on CEQA. Hopefully you all found it of benefit, other than Commissioner Webb, who.
He knows it.
Yeah, been doing this plenty, plenty long.
I still do not want to set the.
As you mentioned earlier, we are demoing the building right across the street, so hopefully you're all very pleased to see that. At the last city council meeting, we did pass, well, I guess it was previous to that, but we did pass what's being called Measure B, so this will go on to the November election for the road tax, and it's Measure B. And at the Fourth of July, you, hopefully you all saw Greg Melton out there. He's our landscape designer who's working with us on Austin Park. He had a booth out there and was taking, he had his drawings and was taking public input, and he was, every time I went by, he was busy. People talked to him, so.
That's good.
I haven't talked to him since then, but he, he said he was getting great input and that we talked to him.
Who made that suggestion to me either? To do?
They want.
Are any of the trees going to have to come down?
Which, what do you mean?
In the park.
We're having an assessment done right now, so we have an arborist who's looking at Austin Park, Highlands Park, and Red Bull Park, all of the trees out there. We've been having a lot of problems with, for instance, Austin Park right over the playground equipment, one of the trees was hollow, so we took, we had to cut that one down. We also trimmed up one of the other ones nearby because it was having some issues. We've had a number of trees fall over here in Austin Resort.
Those palm trees are those out there in front of that health food store, the one that just moved right across from Main Street?
I think it was.
I've just noticed a lot of the palm branches down because the high winds and on the farm I grew up on, those can be somewhere between 80 to 100 pounds if you're wet.
Yeah, and barbed.
And barbed, and they bounce, they bounce to about 30, 40 feet.
Yeah, I believe Doug Aaron, our public works director, told me that he had talked with them and told them they need to turn those up.
Okay.
But they do that.
It's out there, in the cosmos.
So that's my report.
All right. Commissioners, does anyone have any reports?
Question on Highlands Park, were, is there any, the last thing I heard, we had been trying to figure out how to pay for it, and what is that still?
Well, so a couple of things. At, I can't remember which council meeting it was, I guess the last regularly scheduled council meeting, I think it was. I asked for the council to specifically allocate bond money to me for different projects. We got $500,000 allocated for Highlands Park. We got $500,000 allocated towards Austin Park. We got $300,000 allocated to the frontage for Highlands Park. So what we're planning to do there in the frontage is set back the road so we can have angle parking and a nice wide sidewalk along there, as well as having a bus turnout. So we've got $300,000 allocated there. We're also in negotiations with the bus LTA, Lake Transit Authority, for them to probably have some money for us to, to do our other stuff. We also got money out. We also got money allocated to purchase parking from a realty world across the street that we can use for overflow parking for the, for Highlands Park. And we also got money allocated towards putting in a crosswalk, right down mid-street crosswalk, so, so that people can go from the park to the parking lot.
That's important, parking crosswalk. How many are going to start to spend all this money?
We're, we're gonna, we're starting with the planning process right now. We've hired coastal engineering to do what they call a project study report for us to kind of design things.
What bond funds are these, you're talking about?
This is the Series A, reanualmed bonds that were sold in 2006. We have about $6 million for different projects.
Any projection on when, when the YB, yeah, and when the last shovel in the ground?
Well, at this point, we'll probably get started in the spring, is what I'm hoping for. Earlier on the parking lot, that we can be going pretty soon, but we want to get the frontage going probably before we get going on parking zone.
Some big steps.
Yeah. Yeah, we want to see, we want to see projects going, so that's...
Did you also say that we're working on a master plan for Austin Park and also Redbud, right?
Yep. We're probably not going to do a master plan for Redbud. The original concept for doing a master plan for Redbud was they, they wanted to purchase a couple of properties right there on the frontage, and then incorporate that into the park. At this point, I'm not sure that there's much reason to do a master plan at Redbud because there's not much to do there. You've got the harbor, and then there's not really much of a park.
Harbors in the dock and grassy area where they do the farmer's market.
No, they're not doing the farmer's market there, they do the farmer's market at Highland.
Well, I know where they did the farmer's market there. I know that's slated for Highland.
I wanted to commend Public Works. They cleared some weeds at some light intersections, that was very helpful. And the Fourth, the Lions, minus the Fourth of July fireworks, and the parade were, were great. And is there any proposed road patching? I get that question asked. Is any of the weather...
They're doing road patching all the time, so I think I don't know what's, you know, what's slated, but I know that they're doing quite a bit.
All right. Thank you, Craig.
And assuming Measure B gets passed, we'll need even more.
See, there you go. And that's lucky. All right, anyone else?
Major B passes, hold on to these other bond numbers, there are those major...
And it will never be outlined, it moves, JPL's never just the way it's made.
But you're coming down here.
I know, I do. Put second streets up there.
So anyone else? I will invite a journalist, I'm not going to show you.